We have a basic, basic recording we can still do. So we're good to go the old fashioned way, sir.
Now, it's seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alex Dessa.
You.
Dan Derser.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, the Collins.
Here.
Phil Heisen.
Yep.
Ellie Morse.
Here.
Eddie Dean.
Here.
Uh, Mayor.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Let us stand and have our final meetings.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have two is the regular minute, uh, consec- meeting consecutively. It consists of approval of this agenda, approval of past minutes on the agenda, pick some date, and special meetings from April twenty first, twenty seventh, May first, and the approval of the fire control for May twenty twenty three. Is there any motion to your seat?
I'd like to add something to the agenda before we do this. There was a minute from last, uh, court session about the committees, the boards, and commissions. I'd like to put that in the agenda. Are we supposed to do that?
That not something that you can, uh, do when you give your report?
Uh, I think.
Do you have any agenda?
Well, I think there needs to be a supplement because we want to vote on it.
I don't think they have enough information to vote on it. It's not on the agenda or put it off for much more.
No, no. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to put it out of agenda and.
It's been on, it's been on about.
About two, two months.
About three agendas.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it keeps getting postponed.
Yeah, government services have been doing this for five.
I know you gave, uh, you talked about it at work session, but it didn't, it never made any sense because some people said, look, we don't need another committee because we already have that covered by this committee or that committee, and if you don't have a definite plan, how can we talk about it?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
I, I think he has a plan, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ed, it's, uh, I'm, uh, very, what, Ed, wait, after the public forum, after the, uh, after the, the tournament, sorry, after the committees.
I'll go last, if that helps.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know if this is, uh, an addition to the agenda or not, but there still seems to be some confusion about the, it, um, it was in the budget, it was out of the budget. It was in the budget, now it's out of the budget. Um, I'm not sure that just being out of the budget, you know, disbands it, um, and there's some possible confusion. Is that something we should have a vote on, you know, just to finalize it and say, yes, we want it or no, we don't? It's not in the budget.
So if it's not in the budget, budget, there's no money for it, so it doesn't exist anymore.
I mean, that's why we did it in the work session, we, we did vote at the work session.
Uh, I voted at the work session, the council.
Well, I mean, we voted on whether or not to have it on the budget.
But this is.
It wasn't a formal vote.
This is the council meeting. So can we just vote not to have it or to have it and put them into, and then it would be, that would be here?
Well, I think by voting to approve the budget is the formal vote because there's zero dollars in the budget for it now.
That is what the budget reflects.
Well, what is it, any harm, maybe put it another way, is any harm in saying the council has voted not to renew the contract? There's no harm in that.
What you're good for this.
So if, if there's no harm in, um, at this point, I would like a mo- make a motion.
All right, let's get through this agenda addition.
I can make a motion at any time, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm making a motion now.
There is a motion on the floor to.
Two motions can be on the floor.
Amend the agenda. Let's get that out.
Two motions can be on the floor at the same time.
That's amended to the agenda?
Two motions can be on the floor at the same time.
And let's vote on the motion to amend the agenda first.
And then you will allow me to.
And I will allow you to make your motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to do it when we talk about the budget?
No.
Mr. Heisen, where do we want your agenda item?
Agenda number five, five ahead.
So it's five.
All right, all in favor of the addition of the agenda items that Mr. Heisen requested?
I.
Close. Okay, you got that. Okay, Mr. uh, Paine, go ahead and do your motion.
I would like to make a motion that the town council of Scottsdale, Virginia disbands and eliminates the D and B select at this location. And I guess that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, yes.
And is there any further discussion? Now, Mr. Paine, his motion.
Well, uh, you know, I just want to say the government service has been over this many times and, you know, we lost a hundred thousand dollars over the last couple of years and we just can't afford to continue losing money because of, you know, people are doing things online and we just don't have the services of the regular D and B and it's, uh, it just, uh, it just hasn't worked out for the town. We, we're hoping it will make money, it hasn't, so I think it's, uh, I think that's the way to go. And maybe it could be reopened in the future. It was, it was a marketing plan or if there was a way of publicizing, but I, I just think it's, uh, everything I've heard from the last six months from everybody is, uh, that it's just not working. And it's, it's hard to do that because everybody loves it, but, uh, it's a public service that we just can't afford.
And I think, you know, Mrs. Bowling, you know, risk communication with town council, he left a gray area there. He said there's been discussions in work sessions. Um, and you remember his email? Um, I think this is, is a step we would like us to take to vote on.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just to comment, Mr. Mayor, I think the better place for us to deal with this is when we deal with the budgets because I think it's not the right decision. So for that reason, I will vote now.
I'll speak to a call to vote.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Clark, were you called?
Uh, Alex Dessa.
Can you clarify what he asked?
If you vote yes, you're supporting Mr. Paine's motion.
Yep.
Uh, no, you're, uh, not supporting Mr. Paine's motion.
Yep.
Dan Derser.
No.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Phil Heisen.
Yes.
Ellie Morse.
Yes.
Eddie Dean.
Yes.
Okay. Any other motions floating around out there that want to come up for the consulate moment? If not, we'll move into our public forum. Any members of the public who wish to speak to any topic? Unless you are here to speak to something that may come up later on in the, uh, agenda, feel free to propose to him, it's law. How are you?
Counsel, I'm well. I, um, wanted just to come to this meeting specifically to say thank you to Matt Wallace. I'm gonna basically read it because I'm afraid I'd get a little bit, uh.
Good.
Yeah. I don't know, emotional or to something. Uh, on behalf of the Long family, we wanted to thank you for your exemplary work for the community of Scottsdale. Uh, Barry and I have lived up in Paulette Town on Holly Road. Uh, he moved in in ninety six and I moved in in ninety nine. It's been a great run here and we've known many administrators. Um, we got to know you personally and professionally and, uh, we think you've done a great job and you will be missed. And Barry and I wanted to share a bit of our personal history and memento from our time, from our time in the town of Scottsdale. Um, it's this little license plate that says Scottsdale. Um, it got a little bit smoky on Tuesday, December eleventh, twenty eighteen, uh, but it cleaned up pretty well. So from our home to your new home. This is really. Thank you. And I know I'll get to see you around for two weeks, but I just wanted everyone to know. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You have members of the public who would speak. We'll close the public forum session of our meeting. Uh, I don't really have anything to add to what I said, but the mayor's report at the court session last week, other than to say that, uh, those of you who missed our, uh, Bob Dean speaking on his new book downstairs on Saturday evening, it was a really good, um, get together. We got some nice proud people and Mr. Dean told a really nice story of the book. And it's about the James River and Jamestown and the Powhatan Indians and, uh, just, uh, it was really enjoyable evening, so if you get a chance, read his, uh, his new book. All right, I have number five for the four committees, my commission, A R B. Seth, you want to start us off with that?
I can, yeah. I'll be back earlier this month and there's only one item on our kind of approval or denial of a fence going up behind kind of the Habichies area back there with the stretch of houses and apartments and stuff like that. The homeowner had everything drawn out really nice for us and we were able to navigate through our little handbook that we have and still get used to all the resources and procedures there, but, uh, we ended up approving that and I think we'll have a nice little fence here in the next couple of weeks. Scotty, you with me?
Great. Okay, any questions for Mr. Dessa? Mr. Grisco, anything you want to report on planning commission?
We covered everything, Mr. Mayor, in the work session, but just to repeat, just a quick repeat would be, we talked about the area of the, uh, Mr. Quick has that interest in putting some possible three cabins up on, uh, Poplar. Uh, talked about Dina Rattling's property and the change that happened with where we as town council voted for it and we talked about how the planning commission had voted. The other way, because of not full information at the time, we talked about the comp plan and also very excited in fact about our new intern. In fact, if you could just give a, a one minute about yourself to the public, I think that would really help what you're going to do this summer.
Sure, uh, hello, my name's Lincoln Lewis. I'm a first year PHD student at University of Virginia. I'm just again, uh, over the bar, basically. Um, my background is in architecture and I'm really glad to help out the planning commission this summer looking at updates to the comprehensive plan. So once in a while we'll process, uh, so we hope to find ways to engage the community and making this a meaningful document that the community can rely on in the next five years. So I look forward to seeing you this summer. I'll be here more.
Thank you. We are very excited and normally that'll be a master candidate here, but this is a PHD candidate, so we're excited about that opportunity. We also talked sadly, we're losing a member on the planning commission that already got opening of those out that might be interested and then we talked about the buy right usage of land up on the area near the Paulette Town and talked about how the planning commission may want to do some research in terms of looking at how to increase park land or trails in that area and we also talked about that some of this town council. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Dan? The Collins, you've got a couple of things to answer, don't you? You're receiving applications with town administration.
We, yes. I got nervous to open it up like I'm currently committeeless. But yes, so, so technically haven't started anything yet. We are, uh, we have reopened the, um, application process for head administrator. Um, we have about two and a half, three weeks left of, uh, receiving applications in. No applications have been reviewed yet. We're gonna wait till we have all of them in, review them and, um, very thankfully Eileen has shared, um, all of her paperwork procedures and, and how they, they did it first time, so, uh, hopefully it will be, be very soon. And next month we'll have much more about it to share with you.
Questions for work?
Do you have your committee established? I should not have my committee established yet.
Um, I, I did admit it kind of, but, 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 uh, it's a process of reestablishment.
Okay.
If you're kind of short, you can always ask numbers and figures.
Well, yeah, that's.
Are you willing to do it again?
One is not.
Your, your program is top brass. What do you feel about this? Um, Mr. Paine, have you got anything to report on anything? I hear you get involved with a lot of different stuff. I was hoping, I was actually hoping that supervisor Price would be here tonight so we could relay that information about the person that Chief had to transport from Bud Light to the meet the rescue squad who was taking an hour to get here and the guy who probably ended up in a funeral home, so.
Well, um, Chief Jenkins and I meet at least once a week, sometimes twice. I think it was, uh, about two and a half hours last week, so we, we've talked about a lot of things, so. He, of course, he, he sums everything up in the very comprehensive third reports that he gives to us and so always, you know, we refer to him for that, but, um, um, we're looking forward to getting the new police vehicle, um, that's in the working and, um, the auxiliary police are still helping out a lot with their man hours that you just don't get enough credit for. So that's, that's going to be part of it. Um, as far as the, we, we kind of have a default or, or, um, suspended beautification committee meeting. I was, um, able to talk with the, the folks across the valley about the dependents and the thirty planners that we have here, um, and we can't afford, um, at that rate. The best thing we can do is, is, um, is try to do what we've got now. We just don't have the money to spend on that. And let me be a dead horse again. Um, for the last three months, I've been trying to, to get the tools working. They're still not working. Um, in fact, I started to lock the doors.
Is that now or is?
Both. Well, I started to lock the doors this morning. You would not, I wouldn't believe you chased the one that the former smart was in. Uh, I'm glad it rained so far as certain. But every time it rains like that, it's, it's just, uh, it's just a mess in there on Sunday. And that, you know, you can't stay down there twenty-four hours a day. We can't get the tools working. Uh, I'm sure Maddis passed on to our, our maintenance folks that this needs to be done. It hasn't been done either means they won't do it or can't do it. Therefore, if they won't do it or can't do it, I suggest we get a professional plumbing group to come in here and assess all five units, um, six, two and a half, two and a half. Make sure they're all working properly, flooring properly. Um, we've got the Batfield Festival coming up on the nineteenth of June. There's, there's going to be a lot of folks in here. I'd like to, you know, leave with one bad impression, not more, so.
Let me ask Mr. Wallace, do we have some money in the budget that hasn't expired yet that we could put towards getting these bathrooms and operational work?
Certainly.
All right, and Mr. Paine, tomorrow, call it whoever you feel is worthy of giving us a good estimate and.
Well, I'm not a plumber, but, um.
Call Mr. Danzy if you want.
I live next door to Danzy, so.
Give Mr. Danzy a call, see if he'll meet you, tell him what needs to be done and if we have to do, uh, well, we shouldn't have to do anything if we've still got some money left in the budget to, that could cover it, so.
Along those lines, I'd like to know why there's so much gray matter coming out of the ceilings onto the walls or floors after a heavy rain like we had certain and the heavier rain before that, which is also on Saturday or Sunday. Third, we've got some type of insects. I wouldn't say a cockerdyant, but that's a termite. I have no idea they have a use themselves for me, but I've seen, um, the, um, the wood structure down the canal bases is getting eaten from the ground up. If you go down that and you see dust that high.
What, like the pavilion, the overhang?
No, no, I'm talking about down here at the, uh, at the canal basin.
I, yeah, I, I really, it was confusing. I meant that like the overhang, what, what, what structure?
No, as you walk into either entrance, uh, to the restroom, um, these insects leave a pile of sawdust about that big, all of them down. In fact, I had to pick my boiler and blow it out today.
I probably use, uh, I call it port.
That's what I call them.
They, they worry about your house sawdust everywhere.
That's, I guess we need to exterminate an ant pole.
Yeah, that's what, no more on that?
I'll work on it.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Yeah, all right. Any questions for Mr. Paine? Mr. Morris, you got anything to report about, about anything?
No, um, the website, uh, the developer, we're in the queue for content migration. The Civic Plus, who's, um, won the, uh, big award for the contract is, uh, has put us in the queue and when they start that, we'll get notification. Um, we've all seen the look and feel of that, the new look and feel, so I think we're ready to move forward. Once they have that done, we will have the opportunity to look at it and then move things around as we need to. Okay, so I will keep you all posted.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the, uh, website? I love Mr. Heisen, well, I ask him to give his report and then move on into what else we want to talk about.
All right, well, the government service is, as you knew, is pretty, been pretty active. We've, some of these issues have been touched on already. The committee, uh, discussed and thought that administrators' functions should be handled until the adminis- a new administrator is chosen, so, you know, I guess that's in the process. And the, the town council should consider employment of an interim ministry for, I'm not sure, um, you know. So I guess we'll be looking at that to see if we have somebody who can do some of these responsibilities in the interim. Uh, we looked at maintenance issues and there's still several maintenance issues. Uh, you know, painting the curves, finishing that up, there's still some to be painted. Uh, making sure there's a no parking sign on Lindsay Street as we, we talked about that. No parking, and I think that's going better there, that, that having a parking sign would really help. Uh, and then it was also suggesting this, this has been a while, to see if the maintenance person can, uh, somehow get the street signs, uh, straightened up and some of the new poles. So we talked about the maintenance issues and we have a maintenance subcommittee that's really into that, so. Then we also talked about, uh, changing the, uh, format of the financial updates and I think that's been addressed. Uh, and I think this is already in the budget. We, they talked about, uh, eliminating, I don't, I guess we don't have a vote on it, but eliminating solar panels for, we're gonna put solar panels on the seventy thousand dollars. So that was, they felt was too, too expensive, they, so they suggested that, that solar panels be waived until we know about that. And then we talked about the website too and I, and we have, we looked at the draft and layout of the new website, so that's real exciting, we're gonna have a new website, uh, a new format and, uh, you know, new information. And go into the memo, uh, about, uh, the service committees, uh, the, uh, the government service has looked over the several months about the memos of the service committees, committees, and who show that the ones that are inactive be inactive and indicate those that are active. Include each committee liaison appointed by the town council and decide if, and the, we'll discuss important side and we could talk about that. Uh, if there be a separate finance committee or if be a subcommittee of the government service to it, so we could talk about that, but, uh, before, as we go on, I'd like to just move that we approve the document as written.
Which document?
This, uh, the government's, I'll just prove this is written. We, I think this is, should have been done months ago, but, uh, I just think it's, uh, it's pretty good. So anyway, that's my motion to approve it. And we, then maybe get a second length discussion.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Heisen's motion. Now, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
And would we like to have some discussion on this?
I hope.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to make sure we're all clear. This says that we're going to add two committees, financial oversight and parks and rec.
Right, and I, uh, parks and rec is gonna be a tough one unless we have a liaison and a committee to do that because that might like.
Do they have enough volunteers for these committees?
Yeah, you're a good question.
I mean, are we creating them just to create them?
I actually shared my thoughts on financial oversight last week.
Well, I, I would help with the parks and rec and I'm in a gang of help too with that one. So we can probably get it committed for parks. I really feel like the parks are overlooked in this town and, um, you know, I think we need some oversight of the parks and, you know, put rec because, you know, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of rec in the town too, so.
I don't.
I would volunteer for that one, but the financial one, uh, I was hoping you would be involved in that.
Well, no, I think the problem is getting enough volunteers. I'm trying to wrap up this strategic planning for goals and objectives and I can't get people to come to the table for that. I mean, I reach out to the community to see if I can get people to help and I'm struggling and that's really important. Uh, and I'd like to make sure we align the, the comp plan to that, Dan. So if I could, you know, ask you to please, let's, you know, make sure everything's in line here when you all go to do the comp plan, that it's aligned with strategic priorities and whatnot that we set out in the, um, strategic plan. Everybody dominated all of that time. I don't want to see it sort of just overlooked.
It's really good, too.
Okay, so, um, so back to the point, I'm not sure we can get enough people to participate on these committees to make them effective. If, if we could, if you had lined, if, if you have lined up volunteers to be on the committees, then I'm all for them. Um, I, I do agree with Mayor, I'm not sure we need a separate committee on financial oversight and certainly parks and rec, you all feel that that needs more attention? But I don't know where these people are gonna come from.
Would you be okay with this if we, if it amends it, takes out financial oversight and move forward as that? Just make it a subcommittee?
I think make it a project within the government services, right? Governments, like the website.
Well, the thing is websites, well, I guess website's kind of an outgoing thing.
No, what, what you're gonna do in financial oversight is look at process and policy and monitor. I don't think that should even be a subcommittee of government services. I think when you read what this is, I think this is us. I think this is something that we discuss at our, at our work session.
That's a good point. I mean, we review town financial policies, make recommendations on proposed expenditures of town funds. I mean, that's what our work sessions are for.
But we have had occasions in the past where we had discussions that may have gone a little bit too late.
Well.
That's.
Fair enough, but that is directly in line with, um.
Resolution.
The resolution.
Resolution.
It's here somewhere.
I know.
But, um, with, uh, what Mr. Bowling drafted up for us, that will no longer be an issue. That we're not, when we vote on the budget tonight, there will be things left as, you know, it's here, but we need to vote on it as it comes up.
Well, basically, Mr. Bowling said things that aren't in the budget come before council.
That's the way.
That's the way he said it, so.
Right.
And let me ask Dan, because you would know, um, talking about the parks and rec, um, you've had a hard time getting volunteers to, to help out with some of the trails, you know, with, with your.
Well.
I mean, you have some good people come out, don't get me wrong, but they don't.
Well, there's, if you go back to the issue of volunteerism, I mean, that's a national trend that volunteers are going to decrease. There have been different phases of the park and when you get into actual volunteer things, we actually haven't had as much trouble getting volunteers when we want to. It's so, uh, we haven't called for as many days in recent years, but when we were actively designing the building. So I think it would be, it's different when you get into the maintenance of all the other parks. All the other parks, there was a point where some of that got wrapped into kind of what I was doing with the design of parks, which honestly, I, the maintenance stuff, I have no interest in. Uh, it's, I mean, in other words, I'm interested in it for the town, but the issues of ongoing maintenance really, I think, many others have, shall have brought that to the table and I'm happy to let other people leave that. But in terms of actual, what do we do to further something in the nature, in the banking picture? I'm happy to help with some of those projects and I think we can get volunteers for people will come to do a specific project, not to come in like every week to trim a tree or something.
So, yeah, we, we all have a little bit of problem with maintenance, you know, even with their maintenance department. So, yeah, we, yeah, we all have a little bit of problem with maintenance, you know, even with their maintenance department or maintenance. So what we have, your planning commissioners, our planning commissioners looking at, you know, maybe an additional trail and we're not maintaining exactly what we have now. So I'll take on more. Um, but still, um, these same volunteers that come out for the, for the day-long efforts to clean things up that, that you had a lot to do with. Um, do you think they would volunteer for a committee like this?
Well, there's, you kinda have a split between some people who were, if you go back for a number of years, we've had people who've helped create the plans and designs and the work and the, and, and we need a lot of that in the future. We need to have people to design and plan and, then there's a different set of people who actually come and say, okay, they're gonna come and cut some trees down, they're coming to move some trees. And we really have both. And so there, there are two different needs that go that way. And can we do both? Yes, I think we've been a little bit stagnant. In fact, I would thank Jack back there because Jack was a champion after the big ice storm a couple of years ago to help-
Who's actually?
Um, get things going, to get things cleaned up for the town, which was wonderful. So, it's there, it's just a matter of, I, I think I'd go back to our new town council. If we're organized and we're clear on what we're doing, what the objectives are, we can get people. I, I, I have not typically found getting people was the problem. It was more us being clear on what we were doing and how we were engaging people. It's different when you're talking about ongoing stuff that like, how do I keep the canal basic clear? Or how do we keep other parks clear? That's a very different issue to that. And that kind of stuff, it's hard to get people that are long-term taking care of. But specific projects, a building, a new trail or designing things, that was typically not too much of a problem.
Well, maybe we could just keep it, and we could, yeah, active and see, you know, let me do something like that. Because the whole idea with this parks is not just about Van Cleve, it was about canal, East of Square. And maybe there'll be a park at, uh, Bird Street, uh, the wetland area has a park. So, uh, there are parks in this town, probably no parks that we, the town would manage. So that was the idea is to have a, a committee to actually look at all of the parks. And there's, you know, and I walk the parks a lot, so I see them a lot, but have some sort of oversight of all the parks. And, and, you know, advocacy for, I mean, you've got a big advocacy for, especially back in the day, for Van Cleve. But, you know, now there's the square names work and if we have these new parks, we have no plan for this, uh, wetland area. But we have a giosk for some reason. And where to put it, because we don't even know what the plan is. I just feel like that, that'd be good to have a, a committee and it could be a project like you were saying, but-
Why, here's, here's just a suggestion about that, because you're correct. Because it, it really goes back to what Council Payne also said is, I go, I'm not clear, and probably we won't know until we go to be the town administrator. But we are gonna need to have a different plan in maintenance. I mean, over the years, we've had success and failure. I mean, Mr. Quick was here a year ago documenting a long string of things that you noticed that were not what they should be. So, I, when I say that I'm, I'm not wanting to be the person who's the point on that, there are a lot of focus that needs to be given as a town on the issue of specific maintenance. But the other side of it is, when we think, for example, if we, if we look at the callout track up there, we really do wanna talk both as planning commissioners, as the town council, as the volunteers, what is the best way that we can get the park land both taken care of and add to park land, how to do that? And I'm happy to talk with you more about that.
And then, you know, we've also got, Alamo County has their park within that town. And this, this committee could, you know, work with them.
Yeah.
Take some of the trail off someone else. Maybe the Boys and Girls Club towards recreation. I'm not sure exactly, um, what type of recreational things they've got going on in there. Or soccer, the baseball.
Yeah, they have a liaison with Almar, I think that could be part of it, because over the years I've contacted Almar about issues. But I think we have, to, to really have some sort of back and forth connection with Almar, what they're doing and what we need, what needs repair or upkeep. Because usually they do pretty well, but they need information too.
Well, coming back to the, just so I'm clear as, as to this discussion. So it sounds like we're saying not to do the financial, that's what I think I'm hearing, but there is an interest in doing something with parks and rec to some level. I, I mean, I think they both make sense, because it, doing something with parks, I, I think is important. I don't know if it fits under another committee or if it's its own committee. But either way, I, I agree with Council Heisenberg, giving parks a focus is a wise thing.
I agree with what you, not agree with what that means. Against me, I think just second what you were saying about, that, that volunteerism, getting people out for a specific job is much easier than getting them to be part of an ongoing forever committee. So if we made parks and rec-
A project?
A project, but an ongoing constant project. So like, you could, you know what I mean? For, uh, like Bruce Park.
Yeah.
You know, like Bruce Park is a mess.
It is.
But if for like a month, we discuss it and maybe we can get some volunteers to come out and do some planting or figure out, and then it's done. And then when we figure out what we wanna do with the wetlands, you know, for that part, months down the road, kind of reopen parks and rec, you know what I mean? So having always be there, but not necessarily a month, a, a committee that meets every month.
No, I, I understand. The idea of, of, around a lot of these committees is to take it off the plate and be advisory to the town council. So we won't have these issues on our town council agenda every month.
I don't know, I understand. Like make it a, a subcommittee or something, you know. And I don't think it has to be a committee that is a, a constant committee that meets every month. But as it comes up.
It's gonna be a subcommittee of, well, I guess planning commission might be the correct place to work.
But like, like government services. Government services committee chairman sees something that maybe people want to get with the financial oversight area. He asks them, look at this and report back to being on.
So we make both of these a subcommittee, financial and the canal?
I don't think financial needs to be a subcommittee. I think financial is us. It's not a committee. It, it's us.
Chairman says, we need to have this work done at parks and, and, and plate. Let's, uh, you and you, get, get a group together, let's do it, you know. It's, we need some committees with modern guitar and really have-
I would think the financial, that would have to be regular, um, just every, every month. Because we're spending every month, I think.
But with what bill we're up for us, saying that anything that goes out to bid has to come before town council for approval, that eliminates the need for this. It, it, yes, because you're spending money every month. But we don't need a committee to meet and say, alright, is it okay to pay the electric bill again this month? Okay, yes.
Well, I think that's, that's a rough deal.
When, if, if, you know, lightning strikes and we have a hole in our roof and we have to put that out to bid and get a contractor to fix that, then we discuss that. And, and, and review the comp, you know, review the bids and who has most experience and who has best, you know, offer and, you know. I, I don't think we need a committee for that. I think the, the way Mr. Bowing has, has set it up for us, it makes it much easier.
For example, like Eddie just talked about the, getting the bathrooms repaired. So he would bring that up to our, to the town council and see what the bids are for that. If we'd go down that, is that the idea? Would you think of?
I think with the bathroom, were you gonna talk to Mr. Nancy or-
Or you can get some bids too, right? You can get some bids, right?
No, I'm not gonna get bids, because, uh-
Just repair?
I consider them to be, um, pretty important to the town.
Okay.
Uh, it's going on for some time now. And like I said, uh, I was gonna take it on myself to just lock the doors this morning. I'd rather not have a restroom than have one that looked like the one I saw this morning at eight twenty.
So you'll, you'll report so much of your thoughts?
Well, here's, but here's, I, here's what Meredith, I think, was talking about. Um, we have a budget for the canal and the farmers market. I'm not sure what it is. But let's say I go to Nancy. And he says, um, have to go walk around, um, he has fifteen hundred dollars to make this right. I say, do it. I don't have the authority to do that unless council does, or tells me that. But then again, we don't need for anybody else to have that authority either, because they need to come back to council. Uh, even though effectively we're not expedited this, but, um, so that's, that's where we're staying, you know.
And then we come back and say, this project's gonna cost us fifteen hundred dollars. We've got thirty-five hundred in the, in the available. Is it okay to use it?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying, yes.
But, yeah, I think to wait a month to, you know, to ask your, you know.
That's not good.
Yeah, that's the only problem is the time.
Man, this is something different now. If you're talking about planting a tree, that's, you know, but, you know, we're talking about something that probably needs to be done faster. And you say you're gonna have fast projects, slow projects? You might have every light fixture to go out here tomorrow and have to ask the light coming right now. Are we gonna wait a month to light this place up? I don't know.
Yeah, but that's the, that's the criticism that council has had in the past about that, right? That once they find out that those mon- those monies have been spent, that they didn't feel that that was the appropriate way to spend it. So we have this, we have this-
It's in the budget, you spend it, right?
Well, yes, but what you're saying is like the HVAC system, for example, right? That went out and needed to be done immediately. It was done and then there was some disagreement about the spend there, right? So you, you sort of straddle the border between having oversight versus immediate.
It was done two months later.
So it was after the bid.
I wasn't here on that. All I know is what I'm hearing.
I'm, I'm saying that, that, and maybe an example where, you know, could, did, I think the bids went out all of a sudden now. We received three and, um, a, a termination was made that, you know, this particular company couldn't do it. But too much went out. You know, they started here October first or second. Someone was going.
But there is a process, it takes time to get through the bid process, right?
Uh, yeah, there was another company with, uh, two weeks later.
I understand, that's the disagreement.
So I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, if we hit timely, go back to council for something like that.
So what would be, uh, what's the, what's the amended document that we're on? Or maybe you might have that a regular item on the agenda about standing.
We do now.
Okay, and then, uh, make the, uh, parks and rec a project. Okay, that's one here. And that, and part of, uh, the truth, we'll talk about the projects for the, uh, parks. Any things about parks that come up?
Right. So the financial, the financial oversight needs to be built into council process.
Right.
We need more rigor on that. And then parks and recs become a project as needed underneath government services.
Just like the, just like the whip.
Just like the whip.
So they're doing a withdrawal motion in the past?
No, I could amend it, I guess we could just amend it.
Go ahead and amend it?
Well, yeah, I did say as, as, as written, so I-
You have to withdraw.
Would you like to withdraw your original motion and make a new motion?
Sure. Okay, so, as written, except for the financial oversight, uh, being, uh, part of the council process and parks and rec being, uh, part of the government service, uh, agenda.
Offset of that.
Now, do we have more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to go ahead and designate the liaisons, which are blank in the documents presented?
Why don't we do that separately, after we do this? Or we do that? Or we could go over those and see who wants to be in those?
We want, so you're saying vote on this note?
Yeah, this, yeah, vote, vote this first and then we could do the, then we could do the liaison to see what that liaison is.
So the motion is to build the financial oversight and strengthen that in the council process and to make parks and rec a project within the government service.
And otherwise approve this document.
And otherwise approve.
Mr. Heisenberg, there's one other part of the document that, that confused me. The, the planning commission doesn't have a liaison block on it, so the other one's here.
The, I'm sorry? Oh, no, that's, uh, yeah, that's, that's a good point. There's part of it is this that, uh, the planning commission and ARB, when he, uh, we have service voting members.
But it would still have a liaison.
Right, it's not a liaison, yeah, it's not a liaison. They all have a liaison.
There's a bunch of changes here.
Right, and we, we just, I-
And there's also word, I think we need to bring this back to the drawing board. Because for example, I think this is not what, I, I think this is not what you wanted to say. Each committee has a council member liaison who attends, but that does not serve as a voting member.
No, that's what we want, that's the problem with service.
Okay, so planning commission will still have a voting member?
No.
That is not a committee. That is not a committee, it is a commission, but you don't see, I don't have anything in here about commissions.
So the board needs to be tied up, if that's your intent.
Well, yeah, uh, but anyway, at the beginning it says these are all considered, it's considered committees. They're all considered at the beginning.
I wouldn't consider it's a commission, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a commission.
Or it is a commission that was established by the state statute. It's not something we just thought of like parks and rec.
So maybe we should take, uh, that out of here?
I think, I think we need to put this up.
Yeah, we need to put this on the work session.
The work session and, and write it up.
Okay, well, we've, we've, we've been doing this for a while and I'd just like to get something out. We could make some amendments later.
I don't wanna vote on something that is not what you meant.
Well, it's, I mean, it's what the, the government service stuff, right?
Okay, if you're saying, I was having a- But I'm refusing to generalize you. I don't wanna vote on something that isn't what government services can be meant. Committees and commissions are different and boards are different and, you know, even though you say, and, you know, our committees up here, it's not. So if what you're saying is doesn't have a voting member, then this is like, I, it just isn't, it's not working well enough for me to feel comfortable voting on it tonight. If everybody else wants to vote, then, then it's fine. I, I'm uncomfortable voting on it tonight as for it.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you. I also think, I, just so I say this, I really do think if you think of where we've been for decades as a town council and decades in the future, whatever, I mean, whether you guys like to be on the planning commission or not, I won't be on the planning commission forever. I, I really do think that town council or on whatever committee they're on should have a voting role. And the reason they should have a voting role is because when they're on that committee, if they were, for example, if this were Congress, they do get a vote and they vote. And it's the same thing in any state, same thing in any county. They don't take a vote away from somebody in any legislative body. That is the common practice for a subcommittee, for a committee, for the full Congress, for the full Senate. It absolutely is always the practice. So, I think again, in whatever committee it is, what you're, what you're wanting to do is actually have that person get an expertise on something that they're involved in the committee about and then they're also bringing that to the council. So, some people have said, oh, it's a double vote. Well, if you're in a subcommittee and you're in a committee and then you're in the full House, which will send her at any government body, that's just normal. Every, everywhere, that's what everybody does. It's not a take a vote away from it, that's-
It's a wild vote of you six guys.
Yeah, I just think that that's counterproductive in, in the long run for the way that we, again, I see you shaking your head like, you know, it's, do you know?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's anything in code of charter that even mentions a liaison. That's just a-
Well, that's just, it's, it's not-
No, no, that's not, it's not, what I'm simply saying is if a council member is on a committee or a, uh, a commission, there's no precedent in other legislative bodies for that person not to be a voting member. There's, I mean, I mean, understanding I have.
Well, I think the idea behind this is impartiality. So that was thought up, you know, several times about, like, if you have a committee, it's an impartial government, uh, committee that doesn't have any, you know, the town council, you're gonna have more influence than anybody on the planning commission just because you're on the town council. And so the whole idea is to make it nonpartial and, you know, we report to the town council. And so, you know, like, I'm on the government service, my, my vote, I don't vote, but I'm just reporting. But if I was running it, I would have more influence than any member on the committee and I feel like that's not right.
Well, all I'm saying is, as a legislative body, if you look around across America, it's simply what's not, that's not coming that way. And legislative bodies- In legislative bodies, the practice that we've had as a town is the normative practice in Virginia and other states.
Do you know any other communities that have this? I mean, Charlottesville, I would, you know, who have, where they're dual roles like that?
Absolutely. That's the way, that's the way legislatures work. That's the way, they all work, not locally. I think there may be a national, I bet locally.
Well, the thing, you know, the thing that gets me is that, you know, the planning commission has, what, seven people?
Five.
Five?
Five.
Then all councils have been to meeting. So, one vote on the planning commission, US House representative has two hundred and thirty-five, you know? So, that would warm it down, one vote, three votes. So, you're talking about one vote out of five.
The final decision is made by you people, it's not made by the planning commission. Look at this, Dean's house.
Right.
Planning commission voted against it, it passed. Okay, so...
So, can I suggest this? Other committees or charter committees or anything like that are running poorly right now. I think everything's being handled as far as, you know, although it's a pain in the butt, I think it is to make Meredith comfortable as well as I mean, and recommend this all to us when you share anything you're right, let's push this to the work session. We could talk about it more there and at least in the hazard, just move forward.
We just want to make sure that we don't vote on something that anybody comes back to the work session. Well, that's not the way, that's not what I meant when I said that.
Right.
We want it in black and white, what you made, everybody agrees on the printed document and it's final homework and then we can vote on it.
And it has to be technically...
But it's been, it's been at least four ten minutes now, so it really is time to get here.
And if we were, we should have done this in our duties, I would be with you on maybe, it seems like everything you have done so, although it's inconvenient, I think it is wise to go to the next one.
So, you'd like to withdraw that motion?
No, that'll, that'll make official that we're not doing it or regardless of it.
Whatever the, it's more, it gets you, I just don't...
Yeah, if it doesn't pass, it's...
That's good, so I'll align this one thing. And then the second added discussed that we accept this document as the rules we play by. Any more discussion before we call the vote?
So, Council Heisen, what you're simply saying is you're willing to amend it in the future, but at the moment, you're not...
Well, I think we need to amend it, not me, but I think the town council, it'd be nice if everybody did weigh in. Because this has been on the table for a while.
What do we say?
Options are either yea, we accept this just like it was written and explained initially, or nay, because it goes back to the drawing board and come out with a better document.
I think we have to amend this.
Take back where we want to, just come back with a better document. One is clear and concise and has, and has...
It's having a question.
Warning that maybe not, is not completely accurate. So, Mr. Park, did you call the role?
Alex Besson?
No.
Daniel Breschka?
No.
Meredith Hines?
No.
Bill Heisen?
Yes.
Ali Morse?
No.
Eddie Green?
No.
Okay, Alex taking care of some. We expected the next work session that we hopefully will have the document that is clear and concise and tells what we're going to do.
What about as far as a liaison? Can we just make a motion that at least Alex continue as the liaison? He has never been officially approved.
Let us leave things like they are.
So, he's temporary liaison?
Talk about that when you get your complete document done. Okay, thank you.
And I would appreciate anybody's comments, you know, to write those down and be part of this discussion because it's been on and on and hopefully we can finish this up five months after it's proposed.
Next government service, June, June? File to the next company?
Yeah.
Can you run this past that authority after it's completed?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Okay, item six, budget.
Could I just make a, not a motion, but can I just ask Javier, can you make sure that this then, we don't lose this, that it gets put on the agenda for the work session, the next work session?
Yeah, and I caught Eddie's point.
Thank you.
Bill, do you send it to the...
Send it to the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wallace, you want to introduce the budget?
Yes, sir.
Say anything you want to about...
The budget action items carry over unchanged from the end of your work session last week. You had the necessary public hearing, given notice, and we talked about the legal requirements for adoption. The voting items before you are a resolution of appropriations, which contains the specific line item controls discussed at your work session. And the other action item is an amendment to the local ordinance on meal tax levy. So, you have, you have two votes before you to adopt the budget. One refers to the expenditure appropriations totaling seven hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. The other legal change necessary to implement this is to change the meal tax rate. All of your other tax rates continue in their unchanged form. You are certainly welcome to make any final amendments, formal appropriations if you wish. You can get back into the spreadsheets that are before you if needed. But if you're ready to go on the product that came out of work session, motions to approve the resolution of appropriations and then the amendment to the meal tax levy would be any further. Happy to answer any other questions about budget processing and contents of these lines.
The annual resolution of appropriations?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just am really glad I'm legal. So, I just want to make sure I understand, just reiterating what we talked about last, or last week, however.